Good morning and welcome to the, I'd like to call, sorry, I'd like to call to order the Committee of the Whole Meeting for April 14th, 2021. We're starting at nine o'clock. And at this time, I'd like to confirm the agenda. Are there any emergent items from any of the councillors? Seeing none, hearing none. Are there any from Admin?
Yes, thank you, Worship. Administration would like to add an in-camera matter. It's 11.1, a personnel matter under FOP, Section 241 BI. And also, Administration would like to give an update on COVID-19. And if possible, we would like to add that as 8.1 to the agenda and shift all the other items down, please.
Okay, thank you very much for that. And we have nothing else? And I'm looking for a motion to confirm the agenda as amended? Councillor Peterson?
Yes, I would move the agenda be confirmed as amended.
Thank you. You've all heard the motion? All in favour? The motion is carried. We have no presentations and we have no delegations today. And that brings us to 5, 5.1, the adoption of the February 10th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Councillor Sobel?
Thank you, your worship. I'd move that council adopt the February 10th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes as presented.
Thank you. We have that motion on the floor. I'll call the motion. All in favour? And the motion is carried. 5.2, the adoption of the March 10th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Councillor Corvial?
Thank you, your worship. I've moved the council adopt the March 10th, 2021 Committee of the Whole as presented.
Thank you very much. You've all heard that motion. All in favour? And that motion is carried. And at this time, I'm looking for a motion to go into Committee of the Whole?
Also move, your worship.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Sobel makes that motion. All in favour? The motion is carried. We have no unfinished business. We have no tabled items or reports. Brings us to 8.1. And Jennifer, we said the other one's coming right after this. Is that correct? Okay, so we have Bylaw 20-15, prohibited business bylaw conversion therapy? No. Yours is first. Okay. Sorry, my apologies. We have a COVID update from Doug Legore, our interim CAO.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Currently, Strathmore is not considered to be a hotspot. But I wanted to just stress to council how serious this is. We currently have four departments that are hit by COVID, either with positive cases or exposure to positive cases. We have four people out of our Public Works Department. So if things are taking longer, please bear with us. It has taken our toll on staff. And we are being very cautious because we do not want it to spread throughout the organisation because it has the potential to take an entire department down. So once again, we have four departments that are impacted. And we have four people that are currently out with either positive or explosive positive people at Public Works. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr Legore following that? Seeing none, hearing none. And thank you for that update, Mr Legore. We'll go on to 8.1, a Bylaw 20-15, prohibited business bylaw conversion therapy. Mr Person, good morning.
Good morning, your worship. Thank you very much. And thank you for bringing this back again. So far, we've met a couple of times to speak about the public feedback that's come back. Council's now had an opportunity to take a look at the bylaw as well. And so for today, what I'd like to do is go through the bylaw part by part so that we can address any questions that the council may have as we go through. We've been in conversation with the City of Calgary where this was modelled on particularly. I've gotten a lot of information from their team. And if there are any questions that I can't answer today, then we do have the right contacts there that we can reach out to for further clarification. So I'd like to start with the whereas clauses. There are five whereas clauses in this bylaw. Basically, it's a pretty short narrative that articulates the purpose of municipalities, outlines how they can achieve their goals through bylaws, and it ends with a clause that conversion therapy is opposed by well-regarded professional associations. So in short, it outlines that there's a practice that's been identified as harmful by professional bodies and that it's within the town's scope to act on it. So I was wondering if there are any questions that council might have about the whereas clauses?
Any questions from councillors? I just have a general overarching question. Maybe it ties into this. Have we heard anything as far as how the federal government is progressing as far as their institution of a federal mandate?
So Bill C6 is still, like, it's still an active bill, but there's no timeline right now as to when it would be enacted. You know, I think that, like, you raise a really great point, your worship. Their C6 was initiated last March, so it's gone a complete year with no movement. Whereas in the past year, we've gone through a complete, well, two complete public engagement cycles. And we've now presented a bylaw that we can move forward. So it is, there's a much different pace between what some municipality can do and what the federal government can do.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, your worship.
Any questions on this part? Councillor Sobel?
Thank you. Just following up on that and just confirming, I guess, I think it has to be said that an election being called would put an end to C6.
Correct, councillor. That's a really great point. There has been a lot of conversation about potential for a federal election and C6 would die on the table.
Thank you.
So parts one and two of the bylaw, you know, definitely, like, I think that definitions are very important. And that's something that I know that there's been a lot of discussion publicly about this. So obviously, like, the short title, I don't think that we need to talk that much about. Businesses, though, like, there were some questions that came up about the definition of businesses. That is a definition that came directly from the Municipal Government Act, Part 1, Section 1 Interpretations. So it's not something that we came up with. And so since it's coming from the MGA, I think that that would be the most prudent definition to include in here. Like, that kind of alignment across legislation, I think, makes the most sense. The other thing that I wanted to bring up here is person. There had been some feedback that had come back that the definition of person is too broad. But it's like similar to what we said about businesses and alignment. Most municipal bylaws across Alberta and Canada that I looked into have these very similar definitions. This one didn't come directly from another piece of legislation, but it's very similar. So I think that's the same way that when we talk about the need for businesses to come from the MGA, this one, I think that because it is very similar, I think that it's, there's value in having that. Were there any questions about the definitions?
Councillor Montgomery?
Thank you, your worship. So some of us received some suggested amendments from Mr Jonathan Taylor, who had a lawyer look at this. And one of the issues that was raised in that was the use of the word calling and that it can be construed to even cover parenting. So is it necessary to have the word calling in there?
Sorry, which definition is that, councillor?
Under business.
Business there. But like I said, that's coming directly from the MGA. I think that, I think with all due respect, you know, like, that it's very clear that not all lawyers have the same, have the same philosophy about definitions, have the same philosophy. I think that-
Yeah, no, I totally get that. I mean, I just think, is it worth having that one word in there? Like, do the rest of the definitions not kind of define a business well enough that we need the word calling in there as well?
Well, I think that, so that's, and that's where I would go back to, like, the strength of having definitions that are actually pulled from higher orders of legislation. That's, I think that it's very important that legislation that's already been tested in the courts, such as the MGA, that if at that point, like, the courts had raised a point and had acted on a point where calling should be removed, then I definitely think that that's something that we should do. But given that the MGA is a judicially-tested piece of legislation, I think that there's a lot of strength in using pieces from that legislation in this bylaw. So I would encourage-
Yeah, like, one of my concerns, though, is just even opening the municipality up to a lawsuit. Whether or not the lawsuit would be successful in the end, it's whether or not I want to risk, or my fellow councillors want to risk, just even, you know, opening ourselves up to a lawsuit. And so I would suggest that we remove the word calling for starters. And I guess I'll leave it up to council when the time comes to vote on that, whether or not to approve that change.
So, sorry, so I just, one question back, councillor. How will removing calling protect from litigation?
Because, as I said, there, at least one lawyer now has said that the word calling could be construed to include parenting. So it could cover a parent talking to their kids in some way that, again, could be construed as violating the idea or the, you know, the kind of the, yeah, basically the premise of the bylaw. And I don't think, unless the intent is to cover parents in this as well, talking to their kids about these issues, I think it's, I think it's just an easy one to pull out. You know, the rest of the definitions, I think, cover businesses. Nobody's gonna, you know, probably misconstrue the rest of those. But I just, I think it's, so anyways.
Mr Legore and then Councillor Sobel?
Through you, Mr Mayor. Mr Pearson is correct that the superior legislation will take authority over this bylaw. So there's no point in removing calling from here when there is superior legislation that will take impact on it. And also, business does not refer to parenting, so there's no danger of those two being confused. Business is completely separate from parenting. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Do you want to follow up there, Councillor Montgomery?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, like, is the point of this for us to be arguing with the administration about the contents of the bylaw? Or are they just here to take suggestions for amendments?
If I can step in, I think the administration is allowed to weigh in with their opinions.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Let me finish my sentence, please. He has a lot of background, a lot of experience, many years of experience. He understands the legislation that is above this. So I think he was just weighing in with his opinion coming from administration.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'd like to offer that as an amendment, that we remove the word calling from that definition.
Well, I guess we can look at that when it comes down to voting for the bylaw, then?
Yep, that's, I believe that's the process, yep.
All right, thank you. Councillor Sobel?
I may have a little else to say. You know, the only thing I guess I would add is that we could sit from here to the end of the year talking about what lawyers want to see and what they don't want to see. This is a very short bylaw. I really don't want to get hung up on the small points of this thing. There's a focus on this. It's very brief and it's very direct as to what we're trying to do. I mean, we could rip this apart and sit for hours and hours. But this has been a bylaw that's been examined and re-examined, and it has not been challenged as yet. There is nothing we're going to do in politics that is not going to stop anything that we do from being examined and from bringing us into litigation. We do the best we can. And this is tried and true. And it's been proven to be legitimate. And lastly, I just want to emphasize that I am counting on administration to be fully engaged in this process. I think that's something we need. They're the ones who have been doing the legwork on this. They've been talking to local council. And I really do appreciate their input. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Sobel. Councillor Montgomery?
Thank you. So I've seen this point raised, that there's been no challenges to the bylaws yet. I'm curious to know, is that based on, like, 100 tickets written, 50 tickets? Has there been zero tickets written? That kind of matters when we're talking about the fact that there's been no challenges, that there's no tickets been written. So how many tickets have been written so far with no challenges?
So as far as, oh, sorry. Thank you very much, your worship. As far as I'm aware, there are no tickets that have been written in Canada yet for municipal conversion therapy bylaws. That said, a ticket actually wouldn't be required to mount a charter challenge, which is where a lot of the opposition has come to from these. So I think that even though a ticket hasn't been written, that doesn't mean that these haven't, like, these haven't been, I guess, sort of smell-tested by people who would want to challenge them.
But I think it's safe to say that 100% of, I mean, 100% have not been challenged because 100, there's been no tickets written yet. And I think that's important to remember that, you know, when we're talking about the fact that there's been no challenges, nobody's been put in a position yet where they've had to defend themselves. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor. Thank you, your worship. I wanted to move on to parts three to six now. That's the prohibited businesses, advertising and penalties section. Prohibited businesses, it's a very straightforward clause there. A person must not engage in or operate a business listed in Schedule 1, or sorry, Schedule A. So that's just clearly the point of the bylaw. Advertising, this is an important distinction to make, that in terms of prosecuting for a contravention of the bylaw, proof of one transaction in the business or that the business has been advertised is sufficient to establish that a person is engaged in or operates the business. This is something that's also included in Bill C6. So I think that it is an important piece to have in there. And then part five is the summary conviction offence. So 5.1 is any person who contravenes any provisions of the bylaw that, sorry, by doing any act or thing which the person is prohibited from doing, or by failing to do any act or thing the person is required to do, is guilty of an offence pursuant to this bylaw. So similar, this, like, this is actually quite similar to clauses that are included in other Strathmore bylaws already. So for example, the Safety Codes bylaw, Part 1601. 5.2, like, this is one, this is the clause that deals with the owner of real property. And this is something that we had heard some feedback on. I think one of the, I did some digging, and this is actually very interesting. Because it's important because it puts the onus on landlords to have conversations with their renters. So in, under two different pieces of legislation, this, or superior legislation, this would sort of be covered. So partly through the Alberta Occupiers' Liability Act. That act outlines that even though, actually, I'm just gonna do a little reading, "An occupier of a premises owes a duty to take such care as in all circumstances of the case is reasonable to see that each person entering on the premises and the property brought on the premises by that person are reasonably safe while on the premises." So ostensibly, that would cover leasers. So that, like, the leasor would be the occupier. But the act actually covers that in several cases, there can be two occupiers. So there is still a duty of care on the owner of the property. So this is, this clause is something that is already part of provincial legislation. And property owners are specifically named as a potential occupier in that legislation. So I think what I, from what I've, from the research that I've done, basically, what this does is it puts the onus on landlords to have conversations with their renters. And so it automatically puts some momentum behind our bylaw right from the beginning so that landlords have an incentive to make sure that this doesn't take place on their property. That, those conversations are actually the protection that they need if, like, if a situation did arise. So if, in a hypothetical example, if somebody lent, or sorry, if somebody leased property to a clinic to operate a, like, a therapy practice there, the landlord had a conversation at the outset of that lease and said, "Conversion therapy is prohibited, a prohibited business in Strathmore. Are you aware of that? Yes, it's included in the lease." And then if conversion therapy did take place, that person has a defensible position that they did fulfill their duty of care to ensure that it didn't take place on the property. So having this in the bylaw isn't a guarantee that someone is going to be handed a ticket for something that takes place on the property. What it does is it puts the onus on them to have an honest conversation with their leasor or with whoever is using that property to ensure that this doesn't take place on their property. Did anybody have any questions about that or what we've gone through so far, 3, 4, or 5.12?
I'll just check in with Councillor Peterson and then Councillor Montgomery, I guess. Councillor Peterson?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Mr Person. That really helps a great deal. And I think that this was a concern of mine. And I really appreciate the work that you've done to search this out. And I think it would be really, really great because conversion therapy can, you know, the practice of can be very hidden. And we know from research in, you know, in where people in Canada are still experiencing the assault of conversion therapy, that this does exist. And so it would be hard. But if we worked with our Chamber of Commerce and with our licensing department within the town, it could be very useful to be able to include a clause saying that, when businesses are signing leases, to ensure that there was a clause that said that they were in compliance with bylaws around issues related to safety. And I think that would be very, very good for anyone that is leasing property today in community. The other question I have is, where would churches fall within this? Because they're not treated in the same way that other businesses are. And I'm just wondering if you could speak to that.
Thank you very much, your worship. Thank you very much, councillor. Churches would be included in this bylaw as well. And that's not punitive. It's actually just because, as it is right now in Alberta, the process to register a religious society is actually, like, fairly straightforward and fairly simple. So by making a loophole for churches, we're actually creating an exploitable loophole that any organisation would be able to take us up on.
Thank you for that, Mr Person. Councillor Montgomery?
Yeah, I just want to say, Geoff, you know, I have all the respect in the world for you. I think you're amazing at what you do. And, you know, and obviously, you have put, you know, some thought and research into all of this. I would like to suggest that we remove that clause as one of my amendments. You know, I think that it puts an unfair burden on the property owner. I think it creates a risk, an unnecessary risk that, yeah, is essentially unnecessary, really. And not only that, but we're kind of talking about, you know, creating almost like, you know, the extra work on behalf of the town and behalf of, you know, people that would have to, you know, ensure that they're following these things. It's just kind of one more thing, basically, to add to the list for businesses to have to be on top of or aware of in order to not put themselves into, or not even businesses, but just, you know, a property owner. And so to me, it's an unnecessary risk, again. And so I would like to suggest that one of my amendments would be that we would remove this clause entirely. Thank you.
Let me ask a question. Just before I go to Councillor, Deputy Mayor Cox, what do we have in other situations where we have building owners if something of an illegal nature is going on in a business? Does the owner of the building also have responsibility? For example, if I own a building and someone decides to run an illegal gambling room in there, is the building owner liable for something at that time as well? Does anyone know?
Yeah.
Yep, Mr Person?
Thank you very much, your worship. And that's a really great point because that is part of what the Premises Liability Act in Alberta covers. And this is a similar act that's, as is in other jurisdictions across Canada. So basically, like, the Coles notes of it is that ignorance isn't a defence. And so a landlord has a duty to know what's going on on their property, or at least have taken steps to know what's going on. So, and that's where you can have two occupiers of a space, a leasor and an owner, who are both partly responsible. So I do, I really appreciate what Councillor Montgomery has said about, especially about, like, adding a burden onto landlords. But the value of this isn't actually in terms of being a punitive measure in the bylaw. The value of this is actually to protect landlords. So that we're giving landlords a mechanism by which they can protect themselves from litigation or prosecution. So that by having these conversations, by creating a process where they can speak about this bylaw, that's part of their defence, should somebody ever attempt to prosecute them.
Thank you. Does that help, Councillor Montgomery, as far as your concerns? And then I'll come to-
Like, under what circumstances would a property owner be prosecuted or, you know, have legal action against them if our bylaw doesn't mention anything about property owners?
So you're saying if we did have the bylaw amended so that the building owner wasn't responsible for the leasor, would they be liable?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, under what circumstances they would be liable for if somebody decided to do conversion therapy in their building? If we don't, if we're not, if our bylaw's kind of, you know, prohibiting that for businesses, or for landlords, I mean, then where, what laws would they run afoul of that would put them in a liable position, that the provincial one would protect them?
So I think in this case, it would be especially around civil lawsuits. So that if an individual was harmed by conversion therapy or had gone through a process where a family was suing a clinic, let's say, for a conversion therapy practice that had resulted in permanent harm to an individual, then a case like, in a case like that, because of the premises liability law, that family could also sue the landlord of the building if that landlord knew that conversion therapy was taking place on their property. I'm a little bit, like, we're sort of, we're going to the limits of my research. So this is a question, Councillor Montgomery, that I would love to take back to some of the other sources who I've talked with.
So you're saying that by having the bylaw discuss or deal with the building owner, we're actually trying to give him more power as opposed to making him more liable? It's the other way?
Exactly. What we're trying to do with this clause is ensure that a property owner is able to provide evidence for their defence that, yes, they attempted to ensure that their renter is aware of this bylaw and is abiding by this bylaw. That doesn't mean that they are responsible to ensure that 100% of the time that that person isn't following through on conversion therapy. That's part of what our enforcement initiative, or our enforcement's responsibilities are. But it's a clause to ensure that there is a defence for that landlord. It's helping to protect the landlords.
Thank you. Let's go to Deputy Mayor Cox, and I'll come back to you, Councillor Montgomery. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, your worship. I'm, at the beginning, when we talked about definitions, Geoff, you referred to a higher legislation. But now, when it comes to this paragraph that Jason, that Councillor Montgomery is trying to exclude, you're not talking about higher legislations. Because 99% of business owners or landlords, per se, let's go residential and commercial, have to follow a specific lease agreement. And that clause won't be in it. If you change a specific lease agreement, you're then liable for not following the actual legislation that renders that a legal document. So you have to make sure that those terms that you're adding, being conversion therapy- being conversion therapy, is acceptable by that higher legislation. So that concerns me. Because now you are talking about lawsuits.
Jeff?
Thank you very much, councillor. That's a really great point. And as far as I know, I mean, like, I've signed a few commercial leases in my time. I've seen many more. Almost all commercial, or all commercial leases that I have seen include a clause that says that the leasur has to be in compliance with all federal, provincial, and municipal bylaws. So that's a part of standard lease agreements. I think what our communication on this bylaw would be is encouraging landlords to now have a conversation with their leasurs about this bylaw. Because like I said before, like just about the Premises Liability Act, ignorance isn't a defense. And so just because that clause is in there that says that leasurs have to be abiding by all bylaws, in my opinion, if a landlord has gone that extra mile to ensure that leasurs are aware of this new bylaw, that would be the additional protection that I think would be necessary. So the clause doesn't tell landlords to add a new clause into their lease. I think that councillor Peterson made a good point that that is something that I think that many landlords would want to consider. But the fact that most leases or all leases that I have seen include a clause already that requires leasurs to be in compliance with existing bylaws and legislation, I think that that's what already covers this.
Can I continue? Can I respond, your worship?
Yes.
So I hear you and I agree with you in a certain point. But I also think that you're saying that this added clause is going to protect anybody, landlords, per se. And I honestly don't see that. Because the first person that would be listed may be the business, but the second person on the lawsuit is the business owner or is the landlord. And so having said all of that, you're still, they're still in the exact same position that they were before they signed a lease and had the conversation. Because conversations are just that, conversations. That's, I'm fine moving on. That's-
Okay, I was just, I was just going to say that if this bylaw is in effect, then the building owner would have the ability and responsibility to make sure he or she is aware of what kind of business is going on in that business. And he has the ability or she has the ability then to tell the person leasing the building, these are the things that cannot be done in this building. And then I have, he or she would have protection, I would think, as far as any civil litigation. If someone decided to run conversion therapy after being made fully aware of not being allowed to do that, I would think that gives, I would say, this is just me speaking, but it just seems that that would give the building owner some credibility as far as he or she tried to tell the person or informed the person that this was not allowed in that building. Councillor Montgomery?
Thank you. So I guess I just wanted to, first of all, this doesn't really encourage landlords to have that conversation. It basically forces them to do that. And then I guess if I'm understanding this correctly, you're saying that there's like that overarching provincial legislation that would speak to this regardless of whether this clause was in this or not?
Your worship. Councillor, the legislation that I mentioned is the premises liability law. And the reason I bring that up is that I think common sense would have you believe that if someone leases a space, that they're then responsible for that space. What the Premises Liability Act describes is that there are many scenarios in where a leasur isn't the only occupier. They're not the only person responsible for that space. So what I'm saying isn't that the Premises Liability Act is superior legislation to what we're doing here. I'm saying that it's a separate piece of legislation that we need to consider the effects of in this bylaw. And so the effect of the Premises Liability Act is that it makes owners liable for acts that occur on that property. And that this clause, even though it doesn't specifically say that they have to have a conversation, that's part of the communication side of this. Like that, for instance, when council approved the backflow prevention initiative last fall, we've communicated with business owners since then to make sure that they are aware of, like, how they have to come into compliance with that. That communication strategy wasn't part of the bylaw and it wasn't outlined in the bylaw. That's something that administration does to make sure that the community is in compliance with that. We don't want to be punitive to landlords. We want to help them out as much as possible. So in a case like this, we've done our research. We see that this, that even though common sense would indicate that it's going to be the therapist who rents out that space who would be responsible for any harm that's occurred through their practice. Premises Liability Act would indicate that owners have a share of that responsibility. And that through a clause like this, they would be able to have a conversation, document the conversation. Like, they can take whatever steps they would like to do that they, like, that their lawyer or whoever advises would be necessary to protect them in this situation. That's, so like, that's, it's not, it's not superior in the same way that the MGA is superior in our definitions. It's just, it's a separate piece of legislation that will impact how this bylaw is read in the courts.
Thank you, Jeff. Did you want to go on to the next one?
So, and just to be clear, so like, that being removed as one of my amendments, that'll come back at the next meeting? Or whenever we look at this again?
Let me ask that of administration. If councillor Montgomery has some amendments or things that he's not in agreement with, would we do each of them separately then? Because I would hate to look at a blanket thing where a bylaw may not pass because one or two things. So we would look at them individually?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. At second reading, council has the ability to move any amendments that they so choose. And they can be considered separately, yes.
Okay, thank you. Does that clarify things, councillor Montgomery?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff?
Thank you, your worship. Similarly, for 5.3 and 5.4, sorry, 5.3, 5.4, and 5.5, it's similar to what I described with the Premises Liability Act. That for 5.3, just because the owner or the manager of a business doesn't carry out the specific act of conversion therapy, if they directed an employee to carry it out, then the owner or manager of the business would be responsible. That's what 5.3 describes. 5.4 describes just the, like, the corporate directors and whatnot. So that's, it's just, it's another step to ensure that the people involved in a business that may be affected by this bylaw have had conversations internally. So these are clauses that will help get momentum behind the bylaw from the get-go. So it's not just us who are talking to businesses, but within businesses, the people who have a stake in the business are starting those conversations as well. And then finally, 5.6, that's the, any person who is convicted of offense pursuant to subsection one is liable on summary conviction to a fine not exceeding $10,000 and in default of payment of any fine imposed to a period of imprisonment not exceeding one year. This is exactly in line with other municipalities, which, you know, I think is really important with an action like, you know, with an initiative like this. I think that also important is that the federal legislation that is being considered, it's being, like, the federal legislation is amendment to the Criminal Code, which I think speaks to the severity of how they see this, how they see conversion therapy affecting individuals. So I think that the size of fine, I think, is proportionate to that, to that harm.
Councillor Montgomery, we'll go to councillor Peterson, then councillor Montgomery.
Thank you, your worship. Mr. Person, I'm referencing 5.5. And the question is one that I've talked to you about before, which is the term acquiesce. And I wanted to speak to this in relationship to pastoral groups or to churches specifically. And I'm just asking a hypothetical question. I don't know if you can answer it. But if you're a member of a church and that church is practicing conversion therapy, and so is a person then who is a member of that church considered a partner? And if they are considered a partner, is that then meaning that they acquiesce to that?
Thank you, councillor. I did some looking into this. And unfortunately, this is one case where I couldn't find a clear answer. Congregations are a bit of a gray area because different churches, different religious organizations have different levels of involvement for their congregations. I think that in, what, like, the short answer of what I came up with is that this is where it would actually have to be, like, there would be faith in the bylaw officer, faith in the, like, in the judge to adjudicate that gray area. That's, that trying to nail down specific hypotheticals like that in the bylaw would be very, very difficult. And that's where we have to trust the other bodies of the judicial system to interpret that part. But I don't have a clear answer for that one.
Thank you, your worship. I just, I just want to say that, you know, in terms of belonging to congregations, I think that most of us, or any of us who belong to any faith group would be definitely hugely blessed if we could agree to everything that occurred under the auspice of the faith to which we belong. And many of us struggle within that. And I think, you know, conversion therapy has so many nebulous terms, you know, cure therapy, reparative therapy. There are just so many capacity processes in this nebulous term that can encompass a range of really highly damaging practices. And I think that, you know, there is that possibility that you could belong to a congregation and inadvertently acquiesce. So when I look at that language, that's the only thing that I have problem with, is that one word. I would like to see it gone because it is such a subjective judgmental process in that. And I think that if there were protection, critical protection for persons vulnerable to facing conversion therapy, I don't think that it would hurt them to take this out. And I think it would offer some protection to people who are innocent on the other side of it. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. I'm going to go to deputy mayor Cox because she's only spoken once and then I'll go to councillor Montgomery.
Thank you, your worship. It's actually part of what councillor Peterson was referring to. And just to help a little bit, churches would fall under 5.4. Councillor Peterson? They are under the Business Corporations Act, not the Partnership Act. So the word would have to come out of 5.4 as well if you wanted to protect churches. That's all I had to say, your worship.
Thank you. Councillor Montgomery?
Thank you. Yeah, so I was also going to say that, yes, I would like to see in under 5.4 and 5.5, assented to and acquiesced removed, please, as one of my suggestions for amendments. Thank you.
Thank you.
So parts seven and eight, enforcement and commencement. Under enforcement, sorry, the only actually note that I have on this is commencement, just that we've said that it comes into full force and effect upon third and final reading. That is something that we saw some feedback on, that that would be like quite an abrupt beginning for this. So there is the possibility that if council would so like, we can amend that to have a phased-in approach of three months or however long to ensure that we've got a communications plan for the rollout of this.
Thank you, Jeff.
So then before I go into schedule A-
Your worship, your worship, I have a question about that.
Councillor Montgomery?
Jeff, could you just maybe elaborate on what kind of problems we would run into if this was, if this actually did commence upon third reading?
I think that's, we, because, because we don't have like a firm deadline on this right now, we've got a rough outline for a communications plan, but we also haven't started, like, talking to the community about how this would actually have to, how this would affect their business or their organization. So from my perspective, I would just, I think that the problems would be that we would be creating stress for people where they don't, where they'd be afraid of being out of compliance with this bylaw. So it gives us an opportunity, the same way, actually, like, when I referenced the backflow prevention meters, that in that scenario, we had an opportunity to communicate with business owners before the bylaw came into effect, which I think, you know, like, helped them to prepare for the bylaw. So in the same sense here, it's just, it's relieving stress on business owners, making sure that they know that they've got an opportunity to become informed, to have those conversations, to ensure that they've got all the steps taken that they need to.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So before we go into schedule A, there was one point that was made in the community feedback session, just about age and consent. And that's that they wanted to see that brought into the bylaw. The whereas clauses that we used on this one, specifically about the College of Alberta Psychologists, they specifically, in their policy statement, they call out that age actually doesn't matter with, like, regardless of age, the Canadian Psychological Association opposes any therapy with the goal of repairing or converting an individual's sexual orientation. So I just, I just wanted to address that additional point. Schedule A, so this is the, like, this is our overall definition of conversion therapy. And so what we said is that it means "a practice, treatment, or service designed to change, repress, or discourage a person's sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, or to repress or reduce non-heterosexual attraction or sexual behavior. For greater certainty, this definition does not include a practice, treatment, or service that relates, A, to a person's social, medical, or legal gender transition, or B, to a person's nonjudgmental exploration and acceptance of their identity or development." So there was, there was a lot of feedback on the definition. This, from our perspective, it's really, it's comprehensive and it's consistent with what other municipalities have done. And it's, this is something that when I spoke with the city of Calgary, it was carefully worded to ensure legal and charter scrutiny. So it is, just like the background on it is that our department didn't put this together. This is something that came from the city of Calgary with legal support and support from other experts. Excellent. So if there are no other questions, then that's the entire bylaw.
I'm going to go to councillor Sobel. I have a request from administration that if we leave the screen, they don't know if we've left the meeting. And they need to record when people come and go from the meeting. So if you're going to block in your screen and leave, you need to let us know if you're gone. That's just a procedure matter to make sure we know where everybody is. And you need to check out when you leave a meeting. Councillor Sobel and then councillor Montgomery.
Thank you. And I'm so pleased that we've finally gotten to schedule A, which is the- which is the crux of this whole issue. And I think administration and those that they're following have done a great job in regards to this particular issue. I've heard lots of concerns about parents speaking to children and priests and ministers speaking to persons from their congregation about gender transition and homosexuality and all sorts of issues here. And there's concerns that this bylaw will prohibit that. And this section very, very specifically says that it won't. Because it has to be a practice or a treatment that is designed to change. Nothing stops anybody from speaking about this. You have to have an actual process. It has to be, it has to be an effort to go out and change people's gender identity. And that's not what this is, that's not what this is about. I can appreciate that some need some assistance and need some guidance and help in making decisions. And I don't think, I don't see anything, and I stand to be corrected on this, but I don't see anything in here that stops that from happening. But to turn this into a business or a goal to go out and change people's identity, just because they as a body or business do not agree with it, is so wrong. And this is exactly the issue that this was raised on, that we're trying to stop. So thank you for taking the time to speak on this and put this together, Geoff. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Sobel. Councillor Cox, or sorry, Deputy Mayor Cox and councillor Montgomery.
Thank you. I agree with councillor Sobel. Other than it does say in Schedule A, repress and reduce. That's very, very different than change altogether. That's just my ten cents.
May I respond, your worship, to that?
Yes, you can.
It has to be designed though. It has to be a plan. That is the design for their actions. It's not, it doesn't, it doesn't speak to.
Where does it say that?
First line. Designed to change. So that is, that is the intent. The intent is to repress or change. And what I'm saying is going to and speaking to a priest about or a minister about your personal feelings and needing some guidance, that does not open the door to them saying, don't, you can't do this. And that's repressing. That's, that's the difference. It is what the focus of the person that's giving the guidance is. If it's, if it's just a discussion or information in regards to that, I don't believe that violates anything in this bylaw. But when their goal is to repress or change or.
Reduce.
discourage, then that's, that's a different story. People have a right to choose. Thank you.
Your, thank you.
Councillor Montgomery?
Thank you. And so I guess, just for administration, every time when I go to look at, you know, say my email to check a document or to look at my notes on my iPad here, it blanks out the screen like this. You know, I don't really have a choice. Doesn't mean I'm leaving the meeting. I need to consult my notes and my email and whatnot. And then sometimes actually my video just randomly shuts off. So that's kind of, I'm not sure I can help with that exactly. Yeah, so one of the, one of the concerns that was raised actually consistently at the public feedback was that this definition is overly broad. In fact, it's apparently exceeds almost everything, every definition in North America, except for, you know, the few municipalities in Alberta that have kind of copied each other's definitions. So I, and you know, we heard from, you know, the people that came and gave us public feedback, you know, specifically one woman who mentioned that she would not have been able to, to get the help that she felt she needed as an adult to deal with an issue that she thought, you know, she should, she should be able to deal with. And I don't like the idea of telling adults that they can't pick and choose the therapies that they, that they kind of, you know, want to pick. And so I guess I would be interested either, well, I guess I can offer, I can offer an amendment here. And that would be that we change the definition or the Schedule A to include, so where it says non-heterosexual attraction or sexual behavior as part of an effort designed to change a person's sexual orientation or gender identity. And I think that might help just kind of, you know, clarify the intent of the bylaw. And it looks like also.
Sorry, I'm a little confused. Could you, could you repeat what you wanted to? Is it, you're wanting to remove something?
I'll have to send the actual text in because it's kind of, it's kind of inserted in here. But basically it's, yeah, basically it would have to be an intentional effort designed to change a person's sexual orientation or gender identity. And like as I said, you know, we heard from consistently, strangely enough, from all the people that gave us feedback at the public hearing that this was overly broad and it was broader than any definition that's out there in kind of professional use anyways. So I would either like to see, you know, like what other organizations use as definitions. You know, maybe there's one that we could kind of pick. Or as I said, I would like to, I'll make suggestions at the next meeting for the, for maybe what I would prefer to see. But as it stands, I believe that this is overly broad and that this would prevent people who want to get therapy from getting the therapy that they, that they feel that they should be entitled to get or to choose. And something else that I noticed in the documents that we were given, I'm just, let's see if I can dig it up here. Basically in the documents that we were given, it mentions how that there, this bylaw is not, or not the bylaw itself, but that the definition of conversion therapy doesn't necessarily mean that people can't seek help detransitioning, for instance. That that's not part of conversion therapy. Detransitioning, gender detransitioning is apparently not part of conversion therapy. And I just want to confirm that that's actually what our bylaw is intended to say as well. That if somebody does seek some sort of therapy to, say revert back to whatever gender that they, they were born as, if they choose to do that, that they would be able to get assistance doing this?
That's, that's correct, that our bylaw would not affect somebody who wants to detransition. The other point that I would actually just raise there, not to be semantic, but the, the people who came and spoke were only actually a small minority of the number of people who provided public feedback. We assured people who provided written feedback that their feedback would be weighed the same as people who spoke in person. And so even though the impression from the in-person feedback sessions was that there was opposite, like significant opposition to this, the overwhelming opposite is true, that by far, the feedback that we received last spring, and then again this spring, is that public support is strongly in favor of this bylaw.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I totally get that, that there was a lot of people who, who said, yeah, it's about time, or I can't believe, you know, I can't believe it's taken so long, or, you know, good for you guys for, you know, finally, you know, going after this kind of thing. But when I hear, you know, say like Melissa Langmaiden, for instance, who is, you know, a strong ally of these types of issues, say that the definition is overly broad and that it, that she can't, you know, she doesn't really support the, this particular definition or schedule. That kind of, you know, that says something to me. And then when somebody, well, and you know, we did hear from other people who would personally be affected by this. So it means more to me, I guess, that people who are, who would be affected or who have skin in the game, you know, when they speak about it, rather than just, you know, people who are submitting. And much of the feedback that we did get was before the bylaw had been released even. So I don't, I don't necessarily know that we can, you know, like the sentiment, I agree. The sentiment is laudable, you know, who wants, you know, we don't want people being tortured. And when councillor Sobel introduced this last year, he talked about people being, you know, given electroshock therapy and whatnot and, you know, and kids being abused. And no one, no one would ever support that kind of stuff. But, you know, when we actually kind of look at the meat of the matter and we see that this could prevent, you know, somebody who has undergone, you know, traumatic experiences that they feel has led them to, to, you know, engage in certain behaviors that they feel are unhealthy. And the fact that that could potentially, you know, reduce their ability to access the help that they think they need, that's, that's, that's a bit different. And so I just, I might, I think that we just need to be careful that we're not either preventing people from getting help that they think that they need or from putting the town in a position where we potentially could be just facing lawsuits. You know, whether or not the lawsuits are successful, you know, it's, it's easy for Calgary to go and, you know, fight a lawsuit, you know, a charter lawsuit or something like that. You know, they have obviously more money than we do and they have lawyers on staff. Whereas, you know, for us, that, you know, that could potentially blow out our entire legal budget for a year. So I think that's just where I'm coming from, that we just need to be careful that we're not having unintended consequences. And thank you very much for your work on this, Geoff. I know you put a lot into this and I appreciate, I appreciate your expertise. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could circle back just quickly, a question to administration. When, when would this come back to us again? And I want to give Geoff plenty of time. Geoff, I'm wondering if it would be worth it for you to just check in with Calgary and see how their bylaw has gone in general, if there's been a lot of pushback. You might even want to ask them about this Schedule A, just to, and I want to make sure I give you and your staff plenty of time to do this. And again, I totally appreciate what you've done. Not only have you brought a lot of thorough work to this, but you have common sense, but you also have a great deal of empathy. And the work you've done to bring forward a good, solid bylaw is very important and is very much appreciated. Jennifer, do you know when it might be?
Your worship, administration would recommend end of May, just to give some time to consult and have a look.
Did everyone hear that at home? We're looking at the end of May before this will come back to us and that'll give our staff plenty of time. Again, so much appreciated what you're trying to do with your staff too, Geoff. Deputy Mayor Cox?
Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Geoff. I agree. This is, you've done a lot of work and this is a really, really, really hard matter. I'm questioning the definition of conversion therapy that we have. How does it relate to the Canadian Psychologists Psychological Association and College of Alberta Psychologists? Could we not maybe go down that road? Because you are referring to them as in the bylaw itself. So is this definition of conversion therapy their definition of conversion therapy? Because if it is, then I think you nailed it. That's, that's just where I, maybe that's an option we could look at. Thank you. And again, thanks, Geoff.
Thank you. And Geoff, did you want to respond?
Definitely. Thank you, your worship. This is not the definition from either of those professional bodies. Since those bodies are speaking to their members through their definition, it was felt that that's the wrong definition to use for a bylaw that's speaking to the public. So we didn't, like I said, this isn't the definition, like we didn't write this definition. This came from Calgary. That's some of the, like the logic that went into theirs when they, when they put it together. If you, like, we can use, we can, we can, we can use different definitions, but I do really like where they went with that, that the definition has to suit the audience. It's, I mean, like that's from a communications point of view, that's how we would craft something as well. The definition from the CPA is included in their policy statement on conversion and reparative therapy. That policy statement is very much targeted towards, I mean, like their final line is, is that seeking therapy from an LGB-affirming or person-focused therapist is a positive step towards maintaining one's mental health. Their policy statement is very much directed at reinforcing their professional body, which I think is like, that's, that's not a criticism of theirs. But it's, that's not the perspective that we have. We aren't trying to affirm a professional body. We're trying to create a definition that works for a municipality. So that's, that's why I would suggest that we wouldn't use one of their definitions. The Alberta municipalities that are, that are sort of sharing these definitions, one of the reasons why it's specific to Alberta is that many other provinces, like the provincial government has taken this on as a matter. And so that's why it's localized to Alberta.
Thank you. Councillor Peterson?
Thank you, your worship. To Mr. Person, one of the questions that I had that also came from one of our previous speakers, from Mr. John Taylor and from one other person, included the last two words of the first sentence in Schedule A, sexual behavior. And so looking at taking out the non-heterosexual attraction to repress or reduce sexual behavior was a concern and a consideration in their discussion with council. And one of the things that I just wanted to mention, and in gratitude to Geoff, because even as a past high school English teacher, I got schooled by him in this. And when I looked at that sexual orientation or sexual behavior language, all I could think about was, you know, as a parent, how very often we do all kinds of things that to repress or reduce certain behaviors, certain sexual behaviors with children all the time. But what Mr. Person pointed out was when you actually read the sentence, to repress or reduce non-heterosexual attraction, the non-heterosexual attraction also flows into non-heterosexual sexual behavior or non-heterosexual behavior. And so that certainly added clarity for me and I think addressed the concerns that were brought forward to the council around that terminology. I'll ask Mr. Person to speak to that in case I am not interpreting what he says. And I really appreciate the second sentence in Schedule A. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Person.
Thank you. Councillor Montgomery?
Actually, I would love to hear Mr. Person speak about that. I'm interested to learn more about this. And then I have a question actually after that, but yeah, I'd love to hear Mr. Person respond to that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, your worship. Uh, thank you very much, your worship. Um, discourage persons or reduce persons, non-heterosexual attraction or sexual behavior. Uh, actually, councillor Peterson, sorry, can you just refresh my memory on that conversation?
Uh, thank you, your worship. Uh, in the last, when, when I, uh, was asking for clarification around, uh, comments brought forward by, by, um, to, to council, in the first sentence and the last two words, you just suggested that, that the reading of the sentence should actually, uh, um, be, just, sorry, I'm just grabbing my information, should actually, or could read, um, or reduce non-heterosexual attraction or non-heterosexual behavior. And so you pointed that out to me, it made perfect sense once you did that, and, um, and so, uh, I think that, uh, that satisfied my concern regarding that, and, uh, I appreciated your insight.
Thank you very much for that reminder, yes. Um, that's, uh, that the way that it's written, "non-heterosexual attraction" can appear to be a phrase, but it's actually "non-heterosexual attraction" or "non-heterosexual sexual behavior," or, sorry, yeah, "non-heterosexual sexual behavior." So, so you're right, like, I think that that would be a very clunky wording. Um, I think that's, like, that, like, that, that would be a, um, like, it would be a, if it, if that would help clarify the definition at all, I think that it'd be a valuable addition, but, uh, but technically, from a, from how you read it, you're right, that that is, like, that, that word does relate to both of those, both attraction and sexual behavior.
Thank you. Councillor Montgomery?
Um, if, if I'm understanding the, the point correctly, if we read just sexual behavior on, on its own, uh, that could maybe speak to abstinence as well, if somebody was trying to coach somebody to abstain from sexual behavior, is, is that where that would be problematic?
Exactly, councillor. That's, that, I think that was the point that, that councillor Peterson had heard from the community as well. So, uh, so from a grammatical point of view, this sentence reads, "or to repress or reduce non-heterosexual attraction or non-heterosexual sexual behavior." That's, like, that's how it is, that's, that's how "non-heterosexual" modifies both those other words. Um, so if you would like, we can include "non-heterosexual" twice in that sentence.
So, but if we include that, then somebody could be coached to abstain from heterosexual sex, you know, like, let's say you're telling your, your teenager, uh, or, you know, your, your priest is telling your teenager to abstain from hetero, that would be fine, but if your priest said to abstain from non-heterosexual sex, that would be a problem?
Sexual behavior isn't sexual frequency, and I think that that's, perhaps that is part of the, the, like, the, the question here. So, the, the "reduce sexual behavior," sexual behavior is, is the act of who that person or how that person is having sex. So, so that's, "or to repress," like, you could, like, that's, that the intent of this is, "or to repress or reduce two men falling in love or two men having sex together." That's what it's not, that, like, that's what the intent is, and that's, that's what sexual behavior is. It does not, the, the, the intent and the reading shouldn't be interpreted as, "or to repress or reduce the frequency that two women have sex together." So it's, it's the act, not the frequency, that's being discussed in that sentence.
Um, yeah, regardless of, okay, um, I guess, like, so regardless of the frequency, though, if somebody's engaging in sexual behavior, um, whether it's just one occasion or not, Um, and I understand, like, in the, in the package that we were given, it did kind of um, this, this speaks only to, uh, affecting, uh, the non-heterosexual versus the heterosexual. say that, you know, if we, if we kind of spoke to heterosexual things the same way in the bylaw, it would water it down. Um, so I'll, I'll give it some thought, I guess, and, uh, and I'll, I'll kind of see
That's correct. Councillor, there isn't a, a definition of conversion therapy that exists across any
what I can, uh, come up with about that. Um, another, the question I was gonna ask has to do with, uh, in the whereas, um, it
regulatory body or any bylaw that speaks to heterosexual conversion?
mentions the practice of conversion therapy as opposed by the Canadian Psychological Association
Because conversion therapy as a, as a practice, like, there is no documented case of, of
and College of Alberta Psychologists. Um, given that, like, we have a definition that is not the same as theirs, um, can we
straights being converted to gays.
really mention that they are against conversion therapy if our, you know, if our definite,
Conversion therapy is a practice where gay people are, where, where people attempt to convert gay people to being straight people, and so that's.
Right, right, right. when we posed it, and then it's like, here's a definition of conversion therapy? I understand, like, I understand that's the intent of this, um, and I'm, I'm not suggesting Sorry, what?
Uh, you're freezing up, we're, we're getting every fifth word, or so.
that there's people trying to convert, uh, heterosexual people to, to being non-heterosexual. Oh, sorry. I, I'm just, I'm thinking that maybe if we're gonna have a definition that is different Um, I, I'm just concerned about the idea that, um, that somebody could coach a heterosexual than what those organizations define as conversion therapy, maybe we shouldn't be mentioning that they're against conversion therapy if we have a different definition. person to, you know, not engage in, in sexual behavior for some reason, but they couldn't
Does that make sense, Geoff?
coach a non-heterosexual person to not engage in sexual behavior, um, for the same reasons,
That we've used their diff, we've used them as a, a reference, but, do you want to speak?
Sure. So there is, there's no universal definition of conversion therapy.
let's say. Um, so I'm just, I'm, I'm concerned about, I guess, whether or not, uh, we are creating, Yeah.
And so for us to not be able to use a source because they have a different definition would mean that we would be putting together a bylaw that would have no sources. Um, I think that's, the, part of, part of law is clear reading, and I think that, that in our bylaw, it's, it's, the, the intent and the definition is, is clear. And I think that, in this case, I don't think that someone who would be reading this bylaw would expect that the, like, that the definition that we've included materially affects the intent of the definition provided by the College of Alberta Psychologists. That's, that's, that, is it a material difference between those two, those two definitions? It's not. So I think that this is a bylaw that, that's speaking to conversion therapy. Those two organizations and several dozen others have all spoken against conversion therapy to varying degrees. The, um, the College of Alberta Psychologists, sorry, I just want to make sure I get that correct. Yeah, the College of Alberta Psychologists, it's a prohibited practice by their members. So even there, the definition that's, that's, that they go by, their internal body has discretion as to how that definition is, is, is applied. So I don't think that, that, that the difference between those definitions affects our bylaw.
Um, okay, but I, like, I, I think that we're, like, I feel like I'm always arguing over these small points, but I, like, I think, like, it's, it's, when we say that, you know, it's like, okay, these two groups are against conversion therapy, and then we go, and here's a definition of conversion therapy, uh, the connection is, it, it seems almost like, you know, it's almost like an appeal to authority, right? Like, where we're saying, hey, look at these guys, these guys are against, you know, you know, this, and then, and then we go, and here's what this is, but it's, it's not the same as what those groups are saying this is. Um, it's, it's, like, if, you know, if we were going with whatever their definitions were, then, yeah, we could say, you know, these groups are against this. Um, but like I said, I, I, you know, I appreciate your time, Geoff. Um, I will, uh, I'll bring these forward, I guess, uh, at the next, whenever this is revisited again, um, and, uh, I thank everybody for their time.
And, and maybe that's what we can do, is if, is, if people have some comments, you could, uh, send them off to Geoff through our interim CAO, and we have, uh, we have two full months, well, we got, we have about six weeks, I guess, before it's gonna be coming back to us. Yep.
So, uh, thank you very much, your worship. Um, councillor, I, I really appreciate all of your questions here, like, like, they're not insignificant. Um, and, and just to, to reiterate, like, that, you know, like, that this, there is a, there is a limit to the research that I've done, and, uh, and that's where I'm really grateful to the city of Calgary and, and some other experts who have helped us with, uh, with this, uh, along the way. And so all of these questions, I can take back, and I can, I can actually get, um, get full and complete answers, and, uh, and many of those people have offered to speak to council as well. So I think that if that's something that, that, that would help out, then we can certainly arrange for that as well.
Thank you, Geoff. Councillor Sobel?
Thank you, your worship. I, just, uh, on that last point, I, I've been unable to locate any kind of actual definition of conversion therapy by the Canadian Psychological Association. However, they do have a policy statement out, um, and I'm, I'm, I'm reading from it, from it, and basically, it just says, "The Canadian Psychological Association opposes any therapy with the goal of repairing or converting an individual's sexual orientation, regardless of age. Conversion therapy or reparative therapy refers to any formal therapeutic attempt to change the sexual orientation of bisexual, gay, gay, of bisexual, gay, and lesbian individuals to heterosexual." So, uh, they, they don't have a definition, but what is clear in this is that they oppose conversion therapy, uh, and the, uh, the, the concept of, of what conversion therapy on both pages is, uh, is, is identical. It's, it's, uh, it deals with, uh, the, um, uh, therapeutic, uh, therapeutic or, uh, forced change of, of, of a person's identity. So, um, I, I don't know that they have a, uh, I haven't found, been able to find that definition anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. And once again, Geoff, thank you for all your time and effort on this, and we look forward to hearing from you at the end of May. And that brings us to item 8.2, bylaw number 21-07, off-site bevy, off-site bevy, I'm thinking of a bevy, off-site levy bylaw. And Ethan, welcome. Good morning. Thanks, Geoff.
Good morning, your worship and council. Thank you. Um, I do want to start and say thanks to council for providing those comments and questions and going through the responses that I was able to provide before this meeting today. I, I do want to give a quick timeline of what we've gone through to get to where we are, um, just so everybody's on the same page as far as that goes. Late last year, council went through and accepted our master servicing studies. This kind of gave us the background information to finalize our off-site levy report. That off-site levy report was completed by ISL, and as such, administration went through and drafted a bylaw. Um, once that bylaw was drafted, it went for legal review, in which, kudos to my staff, very little changes were needed to be made. The rates in that draft bylaw were the ones that matched the ISL report. From there, that draft bylaw was shared with the development community. We received five responses from different developers, and those were all shared with council before first reading. First reading, the bylaw rates were adjusted based upon that developer feedback, and there, and with that first reading was given, and thank you for that. From there, a two-week advertising period was required, per the MGA. That included advertisement within this draft more times, and I can say that zero responses were received from developers or the public. That brings us to where we are today. Um, a quick update on where our off-site levies reserves sit now. We have about $5.3 million in reserves, but our Westridge Road project is expected to spend about $1.2 million of that. Um, that leaves us with about $4.0 million in reserves following this year's projects. If we go through the ISL report, um, by 2025, it's suggesting that we spend upwards of $10.8 million, meaning we're currently at about a $6.8 million shortfall. Um, the hope is, is that this new bylaw will provide an update to the levy rate, it'll provide an update to the levy bylaw, which indicates which projects are leaviable and which projects can be built with levy dollars. But it also brings back a rate which we think is a balance between staying competitive in the development market while also collecting sufficient funds to do the projects that are recommended. So with that, happy to take any comments, questions from council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ethan, for your report and your work to address some of the questions that came your way. Questions from council? Councillor Montgomery?
Thank you. Um, yeah, thanks a lot, Ethan. I really appreciate, uh, all the, all your work on this, and, and like, the level of depth. Uh, you know, I really appreciated seeing all the projects, for instance, that, you know, are planned over the next, you know, couple of decades or few decades. Um, and so, like, I, I sent up my question, uh, and thanks for clarifying, and I was just kind of wondering if, if maybe there's any merit to the idea of, um, you know, like, when we, when we, when we talk about, um, and I guess maybe first of all, you could, you could just kind of, uh, elaborate on this, but you mentioned that there's global benefits for, um, for things like, uh, the water, water lines and, and transportation. Um, but, but then you mentioned that those, those, uh, costs are, are basically limited to being put on the new developments rather than the entire town, is that correct?
Uh, your worship through the chair, councillor, every project within the ISL report is evaluated based on what is driving the need for that project. Um, so if a water line is being upsized, say, an existing water line is being upsized, if the need is due to both current development and new development, then the costs are split and not the full project value is levied. Um, you'll, within the charts for each project, you'll see at certain points, there are a levied cost, and there's a town contribution. The town contribution is to account for existing residents that would be seeing a benefit from that project as well.
Oh, okay, and so, and that would come from taxes, then?
Whatever other source council wishes, yes.
Okay, 'cause, yeah, that's kind of what I was asking, but I, like, I, I read your answer as just, it was limited to the new developments. Um, okay, so you're saying, like, so the ones, uh, so you're saying that some of the water and some of the transportation then are borne by the rest of the existing town then?
You are correct.
Or plan to be?
There are some projects which show a benefit to the existing community which are paid for, for, paid for by other sources other than levies.
Okay. Okay, like, but, and, and just for clarification, uh, so you're saying that when you say other sources, you're saying that, like, you know, 'cause I'm just, I was kind of thinking, you know, like, if a water line needs to be replaced, you know, say, in an older part of town, um, that would be paid for usually by taxes, and that would, you know, be taxes, including the new developments. Um, so I was just trying to think about, you know, like, whether or not it's, it's, let's say, fair or equitable to, uh, you know, for, for some cost of water lines in, you know, say, a new development to be borne by, by the existing, uh, residents, especially if, you know, there is kind of global benefits, as you mentioned. Um, and so you're saying that, uh, that that would be the case, then, that, and, so it, that's, sorry, you're, you're just saying that that would be the case?
Uh, your worship through the chair, what I'm trying to say, and I try and say this in a different way, a, any project which is paid for by levies is a project which is deemed only required due to new development.
account for existing residents that would be seeing a benefit from that project as well.
Okay. And so then that would come from taxes, then?
Whatever other source counsel wishes, yes.
Okay. Because, yeah, that's kind of what I was asking. But like, I, I read your answer as just it was limited to the new developments. Okay. So you're saying like, so the ones, so you're saying that some of the water and some of the transportation then are borne by the rest of the existing town then?
You are correct.
Or plan to be?
There are some projects which show benefit to the existing community which are paid for, for, paid for by other sources other than levies.
Okay. Okay. Like, but and, and just for clarification, so you're saying that when you say other sources, you're saying that like, you know, because I'm just, I was kind of thinking, you know, like if a water line needs to be replaced, you know, say, in an older part of town, that would be paid for usually by taxes. And that would, you know, be taxes, including the new developments. So I was just trying to think about, you know, like whether or not it's, it's, let's say, fair or equitable to, you know, for, for some costs of water lines in, you know, say, a new development to be borne by, by the existing residents, especially if, you know, there is kind of global benefits, as you mentioned. And so you're saying that, that that would be the case then that, and so it, sorry, you're just saying that that would be the case?
Your worship through the chair. What I'm trying to say, and I try and say this in a different way, any project which is paid for by levies is a project which is deemed only required due to new development. There are projects that do share those costs. But in in those cases, the costs are shared equitably in terms of how much benefit each area would see. When I say other forms of paying for these projects, that could be taxes, that could be borrowing, which ultimately is taxes, that could be a grant, or that could be reserves if we have those.
Thanks, Ethan. I think Mr. T D is also wanting to weigh in.
I'd just like to clarify the question from Counselor Montgomery. If we're replacing a road or a sewer line within the town that already exists, the funding for those projects would not come from taxes, but would come from capital, either borrowing or grants, not from, not from taxes. Taxation is primarily for the operations and not for capital.
Thank you, Mel. Jim?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, but to, maybe to Mr. T D, you may borrow the money, but you have to pay the money back plus interest, and that comes from your taxes.
That's correct. The, the initial capital cost for the replacement, though, generally comes from either grants or from reserves, not generally out of the current year taxation. Current year taxation is to pay for previous borrowings and operations.
Thank you. Jim?
Just, and Ethan can correct me if I'm off base here a little bit. But trying to simplify it as much as possible, the report that I S L did, and their recommendation for off-site levies, their, their recommendation was to fully recover the new required infrastructure that for, for, for new development. It was, their, their rates covered the entire cost. Because we recognize at administration level that that's not a reasonable amount, we obviously have reduced the rates, as, as Ethan has explained to you, trying to keep a balance towards being competitive and still providing enough funds to, to help get these projects built. But the difference is going to have to be raised through taxes, as, as Mr. T D has explained, not through borrowing or taxes or grants or some other source. So it's the total cost to do the work, less how much we anticipate getting in off-site levies. The difference is what has to be covered from other sources. Thank you.
Thank you. Ethan, did you, you want to take another question? Okay, counsel, Deputy Mayor Cox, and then Counselor Corbiel?
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Ethan, and Jim, and Mel. You answered most of my questions. I still, I mean, some of them were maybe a bit vaguer than I wanted. But I'm still sitting at a, like, I guess, across, you know, which is, is my own maybe problem. But if we go ahead and we raise these, through everything I've read, we are going to do some damage as far as potential further growth, which means that in the end, we are going to have to raise taxes anyways if we want to carry out all of the work that, that has been, you know, planned per se. So I'm still finding that if we do this now, we are going to stunt some growth. Is it that we don't necessarily want to, to grow? That's fine. But then should we not be looking more at maybe our predictions or, or what we're actually planning for capital projects is maybe too high for where we are right now? And the reason I'm also saying that is because you're saying throughout this whole thing, that we aren't really competitive with Chestermere and Langdon and Mirrorfield, which are our direct competition. So people are going to choose to live there because it is cheaper. But yet they're still going to come and use all of the facilities that our taxpayers have paid for. So I'm kind of sitting at that, do we stop growth? Or do we stop providing these services that we are trying to get? So I appreciate that. But if you could help me with that part of it, I would really appreciate it.
Ethan, in your discussions with the developers, and you've, and you've given us the revised figures that could go up as far as the off-site levies, what were their, what was the gist of what they were saying? Can they, can they absorb that? Okay. Or do they feel it's still going to make us competitive? I know there's a variety of reasons why Strathmore hasn't grown as quickly as Chestermere and Langdon, for, for obvious reasons, proximity to Calgary is something we can't defeat. And there's a, there's a perception out there that we're just a bit too far to commute to Calgary, which is, which is wrong, because it can be done quite easily. It's just, we have to deal with one of those major factors. So how are you feeling as far as your consultations with the developers and your work with them? Do you feel we'll still be at a competitive even footing or in a good spot?
Your worship, thank you. And thank you, Deputy Mayor Cox. To be honest, I haven't met accounts, or I haven't met a developer who is in favor of higher levies. I, I don't know a developer who wouldn't want to see no levies. So we do have to find a happy medium between what they would like to see and what supports the projects that we know need to be built. I do want to note that the rates that we're proposing are cheaper than Chestermere. Now Chestermere does have some areas, and that's primarily their older areas where infill would occur, where their, their rates would be lower than Strathmore. But Chestermere also has areas where their maximum is more than $40,000, or sorry, more than $35,000 higher than what Strathmore is proposing. So we have looked at this in terms of being competitive with Chestermere. I did go through detail on Langdon. And yes, their rate would be lower than ours, but they also have other supportive taxpayers that could pay for shortfalls. In the grand scheme of things, we are looking at an increase of about $2,500 per home. And that is less than 1% of a home build for a $350,000 home. And a lot of homes in Strathmore being built right now are more than $350,000. So meaning the impact is even less than 1%. Other factors that affect home building in Strathmore, particularly building material costs in the past year have gone up significantly, way more than 1%. And yet we're still seeing new home builds occur. So I do understand that this levy may have an impact on future development. But administration doesn't feel that increasing the levy will halt development altogether. I'll leave it at that. Sorry.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, does that help a little?
It definitely helps. Yes. I'm just, I'm really struggling with doing all of this, using taxpayers' dollars, using, you know, our brand new developments to pay for improvements to our town that Chestermere and Langdon are 100% benefiting from. Because they aren't going to Calgary, even though they're close to Calgary, they're coming to Strathmore because it's easier and it's lighter roads, and it's less this and it's less that. So I just, I, I want to be competitive with those two markets. And maybe that's an impossible thing. But if we can't be competitive, then how do we make it so that it's for our people, our taxpayers, not the, the, our competitors' taxpayers that are benefiting? But it. I appreciate everything, Ethan. I really, really do. I, I'm just struggling with what it's going to do to our town, and that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Legore might be able to address some of those?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. And this is the fifth community that I've worked with that has been dealing with off-site levies. Never once in any of those communities has increasing off-site levies impacted the competitive of the community from surrounding communities. There is so many factors that come into the cost of developing a lot. Off-site levy is just one of those factors. And I doubt very much with the increase that's being proposed here is going to impact Strathmore from a competitive factor.
Thank you for that, Mr. Legore. I have Counselor Corbiel, then Counselor Sobel, then Counselor Montgomery.
Thank you, Your Worship. I do also, I was going to go along the same lines as Counselor Cox, or, sorry, Deputy Mayor Cox. I do feel that timing is everything. And, you know, I am worried about buildings right now, as Ethan has said, like, I know that material has tripled, you know, in some, in some, some of those material costs. So I was just, you know, I know timing is, is a, a thing, you know, and it's been six years since they have touched these. And I just, yeah, I guess I wish we wouldn't have waited so long. Or, or do we wait a little bit longer?
And that's a good point. I think we all are concerned about impacting the development of Strathmore. Maybe that's a good question to follow up with Counselor Corbiel is, what would be the ramifications if we delayed this for a year and stayed as is for one year? Call it the COVID situation, you know, a lot of companies are still struggling. Any comments on that kind of a thing, Ethan, as to when, when this would be the most advantageous to try?
Your worship, yes. I, the, what I think is most important is regardless of what rate counsel would like to charge, the projects which are listed within this levy are the key aspect. Without, without bringing this new bylaw into effect, we are with the old bylaw, which now lists projects which are no longer applicable. Without, if, if a project that needs to be built is listed in this new bylaw, but not in the old bylaw, we are unable to use off-site levy funds to pay for that project. So not, not only discussing the costs are important, but inclusion of all of the projects that are listed here are important.
Okay, that's a good answer, really good answer. So good job. My follow up to that is if we approve a bylaw and we keep the off-site levies as is, then are you losing some of the capital projects that were in the old bylaw? Like which, are there some that would have to go to the wayside or be delayed then?
Your worship, so the projects that are listed within this new bylaw are all the projects that are relevant. So by, by bringing this new bylaw into force would ensure that all the projects that are needed to be built are accounted for. By using a rate that is the same as today, we are projecting a shortfall in funding. Projects that are listed here are built as needed based on development. So yes, the, the report may suggest that we build a project by 2025. But if development doesn't occur within that time period as expected, then that project will be delayed until the development is sufficient. So we would be collecting funds at a lower rate than is needed, but we wouldn't be missing projects because the projects would still occur when they were required due to development.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Corbiel, any more for, for that? You're good?
No, and I appreciate Ethan's comments. Actually, there was a lot of things that I didn't consider or even know in that. So thank you very much.
Okay, I have Counselor Sobel, then Montgomery, then Deputy Mayor Cox?
Thank, thank you. And I'll, I'll be short. I, I, first of all, thank you, Ethan, for, for this and all the work that's been done. I, I think it's really important to remember that, and it's already been stated, that this hasn't been revised in, in, in six years. And if you look at residential permits issued in the last six, seven years, I mean, 2017, we had 79 permits issued. 2019, which is pre-COVID, we had 23. So we're, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not the, the, the levies that are, that are, that are causing us a problem. Obviously, there's, there's other issues. And I, you know, I, I, I need to figure out some way to tell people that we, we live in, we're probably one of the best communities in Alberta. And, and, and I don't, I really do not believe that off-site levies at $2,500 a lot is going to make any difference at all to, to a decision by a developer to, to, to start a subdivision. We have, we have, we have a couple of really good subdivisions going right now. And, 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 you know, presumably, there's going to be more. We now have an active officer on board. I mean, our future, I, I still think, I'm, I'm, I'm very optimistic about our future. But, but to turn around and, and worry that off-site levies is going to stop this, there's a whole lot more issues at play here than $2,500 a lot. And our prices, our house prices, it's, it's really hard to start comparing them to, to Chestermere or Langdon. We're, we're considerably lower. So why aren't we all sold out? It's, it's, it's not off-site levies. Thank you.
Thank you. And one of the issues that we're going to have to deal with, I know Mr. Legore has already started work on that, is, is looking at Chestermere as far as recreation funding. They need to be, they need to be aware that a lot of their residents come here for indoor soccer, swimming, sometimes the arena. I don't know if it's as much. They, they have their, they have the Rocky View County Arena. But we're going to have to address the shortfall in recreation funding from Chestermere and possibly Rocky View County as well, for sure. That's got to be happening, you know. And I know Mr. Legore and Jim have talked about that before. So I'll go on to Counselor Montgomery, then Deputy Mayor Cox, and then Counselor Peterson.
Thank you again. So Ethan, I just wanted to, I have a couple of questions. But so one is, so you mentioned something about in Chestermere, the infills. And do we charge off-site levies for infills, like within the old part of Strathmore then?
Your worship through the chair. My apologies, Counselor Montgomery. Infills may have been an incorrect word to use. I'm talking about the lots remaining in a fairly developed community, not a replacement of an existing element.
Okay. Is, do you think that's something we should be looking at? Like if somebody is, you know, putting like a fourplex or something like that, where there used to be a single family house, like, should we be, because obviously that's, you know, kind of impacting the need for roads and other things like that. So should we be looking at off-site levies for something like that?
Your worship through the chair. That item is not considered an off-site levy. I, I would have to look into the finer details of how a levy like that would be applied. But I do know that you would have to be able to show that there is a significant change to the existing infrastructure and that improvements would be required due to that sign, to that single development. So it is a levy that's harder to impose. But like I said, I'd have to look into further details on the exact fine details of how that would work.
I see. Because, yeah, I was just kind of thinking, like, you know, if, if, let's say, you know, there was no new developments, but, you know, over time, you know, we, we doubled the population through infills, obviously, like, that would have a big impact on, on our need for various infrastructure. Okay. And the other question I have, well, so two. One is, is there anything we can do about, you know, some of the developers did give some responses back about the payment schedule. And, and I understand that there is, you know, possibly, they might be able to get some, you know, help with, like, modifying their payment schedule. Is that correct?
Your worship through the chair. The payment schedule proposed within this bylaw is one that ensures the town gets paid for off-site levies within a reasonable timeline. There is a clause which would allow the C A O, the authority, to provide an alternative, although we would not recommend it.
Okay. And, and the other question I had is just has to do with graduated increases. Do you think there's any, you know, in, in light of, or kind of, you know, in, in mind with what, you know, some of the other counselors are saying? Is it possible we could look at maybe like, you know, because I, I take your point as well, that, yeah, like the, the bylaw is outdated, we do need to update it, you know, in order to kind of cover the cost of, of the right projects. Could we look at maybe gradually increasing, like, over the next, you know, couple of years to get to, you know, the point where you're talking about, or even maybe a little bit above? Would, would that be feasible? Would that be feasible at all?
Your Worship, administration's recommendation would be to charge the full rate that's in the report, because that would fully fund all of our projects. So the proposal that's shown here and in the bylaw is, is somewhat a gradual increase. We could reduce it more if council wishes to be a difference between what we're proposing and what it is now, but, but this is seen as a gradual increase from where we are to where we should be.
Okay. And does, does this affect like developments that are already underway? Like would they have to retroactively pay more on their development?
So to go back to your question about payment schedule, all developers who have had an agreement which allows them to pay upon the development permit of a lot are required to pay the rate applicable at the time of payment. So they do take some risk that if the town increases their levies, they then have to pay more than if they would have paid at the start of their development. So that's the only effect it would have on existing developments. Any new development, of course, with a new bylaw would be under the new payment schedule.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ethan.
Thank you. I have Deputy Mayor Cox, then Councillor Peterson.
Thank you, Your Worship. Ethan, just as a, just help me, because maybe all the points that you guys have made have been fabulous and they, you're getting me a little bit closer. But right now, one of the reasons why we're seeing such a spike in, in real estate is because banks, mortgage companies and so on and so forth have said, hey, you know, here's our really low rates, but we are gonna start in the future, we're going to make you qualify at a higher rate in order to qualify for a mortgage. So maybe you want to get going now before we do that. So I'm wondering, is that an option for us? And maybe we could get some, some, a little bit of an increase happening and then hit them with the offsite levies? I'm just like, does what I'm saying make any sense? Like I'm thinking, hey, this bylaw comes into full force in six months, so if you're thinking of, you know, doing some more development or phase two or phase three, maybe you could do it now, pay the offsite levies now and in six months, and maybe it will spike something? I don't know. That's, I'm just, what do you think?
Your Worship, through the chair. And Deputy Mayor, the only, the only example I can think of that is something that's already been done. By sharing this draft bylaw with the development community, we've kind of given them indication that we are going to increase the rates. And therefore, they have the option to come in and pay the levies under their current agreement before the rates change. And actually, two days ago, we saw a developer come in and pay for 40 lots, because I don't know if they have a planned short-term development or if they are trying to pay before this occurs. As far as new development goes, I, I don't think there's enough time, even with a six-month delay, to allow those new developments to go through all of the process. And typically, they wouldn't pay 100% upfront anyways. This, this would only see a benefit on that first payment that we are proposed, if that answers your question.
It does, Ethan, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cox. Councillor Peterson?
Thanks, Ethan. I just have a very short question. Will we continue the application of a municipal assist or endeavor to assist in priority areas or intensification areas? And, and, and I know that we've talked about eliminating it altogether, but also if we might include it in areas where there's natural challenges or environmental challenges, I'm thinking specifically of the land of Prairies Edge on the northeast border of our community, where there were environmental concerns and vulnerabilities, just what your views are on that. And I appreciate the background you gave us and the fulsomeness of this report. Thank you.
Your Worship, thank you. Endeavors to assist are slightly different than offsite levies. It's typically, it's for projects that aren't covered through levies, but the town has no intent of changing our practice on endeavors to assist between developers.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. So this is coming back to us, and when, when are we seeing this again?
Your Worship, I'm, I'm open to suggestions from council. This could come as early as next week. It could come the first week of May. It's, it's council's desire on that one.
Thank you. I think, you know, just speaking for me, we've, we've had the material, we had Deputy Mayor Cox's questions that you went through and answered. I think we have a lot of information now. We've, we've had some good questioning and discussion today, so perhaps it's time to look at, and you've had your consultations with the developers, they've seen the draft bylaw, so there's an awareness out there. Maybe sooner rather than later, we deal with this as an issue. Deputy, or sorry, Councillor Peterson? Nope? Okay. Is, is council, sorry, Councillor Montgomery?
Thank you. I just have one final question, Ethan. So let's say that, for instance, like, like there was a development, like another one on the northeast corner, for instance, one of those ones. If one of those ones was, like, let's say, you know, basically put on hold for a long time, does that mean that we would have to, like, obviously there would be a shortfall in the amount of money we have in reserve when we have to go and do a certain project? So does that mean like we would fund that project ourselves through tax, well, through borrowing, obviously, and then, and then pay that with taxes? But, and then that would, you know, be paid back at a future date if that development went through?
Your, Your Worship, I think that would be a bit of a unique situation, because we would have to look at why we're developed, or why we're completing a project if a development is stalled. There would have to be a significant need for such a project due to other developments and not just that single one which has been stalled. If that were the case, you are correct, we would borrow funds, and then that would be paid back through taxation and future offsite collection.
Okay. And so like, it's not, because I was kind of thinking, I thought, like, you know, a couple of years ago, we mentioned that, like, we might be looking at routing some, I would think it was wastewater or something like that, like around the perimeter, like the northern perimeter or something like that? Which is why I kind of thought about that. But thank you again, Ethan, for all your time.
Thank you, Councillor Montgomery. I'm wondering through, through administration, I'm wondering if we allow a little bit of time and look at the first Wednesday in May for this to come back? We have Councillor Bauer away today, and she's probably gonna want to hear some of the discussion. So that would mean it would only be one more council meeting before it actually comes to us, but it gives us a three-week period? Does that sound about right to everybody? Okay. Thank you very much, Ethan. That's good for you, too. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to item 8.3 Fiber in Strathmore, and that's not the dietary fiber? Mr. Ethan Wilson?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll make this one quick. Council made a resolution on March 17th asking that we bring back some information on fiber-optic internet for the residents of Strathmore. Done some research, and we found that Telus and Shaw both have what they consider fiber internet, but not to its full extent. Shaw does offer their fiber to a community, but directly to the houses through their copper coax cable. Telus, on the other hand, does not currently offer their fiber to the community, and they have actually a limited fiber network within Strathmore. We actually have some of our own facilities which aren't serviced by Telus, which we're trying to get. Their service currently is through the telephone lines, but they do offer a service in other communities, which is more upgraded than that. We are in conversations with a internet service provider about providing fiber services to all of Strathmore, but we are in the very, very early stages of those discussions and are required under a confidentiality agreement not to say too much in the public realm. So happy to take any questions that council may have, and I'll ask, or answer as I can.
I have a quick and easy question that came to me from a business owner on the south side of TransCanada, and his question was, seeing the Marigold WID building coming to fruition, is there any way to have, to piggyback on their cable delivery to bring cable to, or the internet to their businesses in that side?
Your Worship, my understanding is that the internet service that the WID and Marigold are receiving is one that they've sourced independently and are paying for in full. If another business in that area or adjacent to it were going to use those services, if that's even an option, I'm not sure. I'm assuming that the same requirement of paying for their portion in full would be the expectation.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions from councillors, or are we all okay? Looks like we're good, Ethan. Thank you very much. And that brings us to bylaw number 21-04 Municipal Solid Waste Services Bylaw. Mr. Simpson?
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you, Your Worship. I'm going to hopefully keep this very short. Just a bit of a background, when we asked the council's consideration to do some amendments to our, our waste services bylaw, the intention at that time was just to make some minor changes, so to speak, to accommodate other, another bylaw that was in relationship to this bylaw, and a couple of other minor corrections, just to bring it in line. We, we were not anticipating doing a full review. Now, however, after many really good questions from council, administration has reconsidered and would like to recommend today that council consider a motion directing administration to do a full review of this bylaw. And I think that hopefully with the questions that we've been asked already by some of the councillors, I think we can come back with a pretty comprehensive bylaw to, to serve the town for a few years into the future. So that's, that's administration's recommendation today. I believe if it's possible to, Jen, can council rise today and pass that motion if, if, if they so wish? Okay. Thank you. Any questions? I'll try to answer.
Thank you. Questions? I see Deputy Mayor Cox, Councillors Corbiel and Councillor Montgomery after.
Your Worship, I don't have a question, but if you could tell me the timing of the rising reporting, I must apologize, but I do have to get to work and it's the middle of the month for me. Can we do it right now? And then may I be dismissed?
Yeah, I think we're gonna just check with Jen. I think that's doable.
Yes, we can, Your Worship. Council will just need to come out of committee and then move back in once the resolution's been made.
So would you, are you looking for a motion to come out? Or is there more questions first?
Oh, sorry, we'll come back to Councillors Corbiel and Montgomery after then. Okay, Deputy Mayor Cox?
So I move to come out of committee of the whole?
Thank you. We have a motion to come out of committee of the whole by Deputy Mayor Cox. All in favor? And then we need a rise and report motion? No. Just a motion then. Councillor Montgomery?
Thank you. I will move that council direct administration to review bylaw 21-04 and bring that back at a future date for council's approval.
Thank you. You've all heard the motion, all in favor? And that motion is carried? And then a motion to go back into committee of the whole? Councillor Cox, Deputy Mayor Cox?
Your Worship, should I leave at this point?
You can make the motion, and then I'll just excuse you.
Okay, thank you. I move that we go back into committee of the whole.
Thank you very much. And you've all heard that motion, all in favor? We're back in committee of the whole, and we can just record that Deputy Mayor Cox has been excused to leave at 11:05 a.m. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Cox.
Thank you very much.
And Jim, thank you for your report. Do you still have a couple of questions, Councillors Corbiel and Montgomery, just before we wrap this up? Councillor Corbiel and Montgomery?
I just have a quick comment, actually, when I was going through this. It's in the organics material, and I don't know if, when they bring it back, if we should be more specific, because like I know pet waste, I, I do believe they want that bagged in the organics bin. That was my only suggestion. I am sure that there's more, but I just, I do know of that one.
Yes, that's correct.
And in the organics bin, would it not have to be a compostable bag then, too?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That's good, thank you.
Those are just my suggestions. Like I said, there was a little bit more in there, and maybe just more detail in those things, but if they're bringing it back, then that, that takes all of that away. So thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Corbiel, and thank you, Jim. I guess that's it. We'll move on to 8.5 Policy Number 1807 Operating and Capital Reserves Policy. Mr. TD, good morning, welcome.
Thank you, Your Worship. Reserves are set aside for the future needs of the municipality and are part of the internally restricted accumulated surplus. The reserves are held within the investments of the town and are set aside to assist in maintaining the assets of the town. Attached to this report is a schedule, and we sent out a new schedule that is on two pages, one page for the operating reserves and one page for the capital reserves. It's more workable in what we emailed out this morning. The, what was included in the agenda package was a list of the reserves, and it spanned three pages and just didn't work. So that was sent out by Jen at approximately 9:30 this morning. Also within the schedule is suggested, a suggested level of funding to work towards to provide a reasonable future reserve level for each of the reserves, if that's what council wishes. One other consideration for council would be to have a consolidated reserve for each of the departments and reduce the total number of reserves. And that's a possibility, like input from council on that. The purpose of this report is for council to consider the overall topic of reserves and for administration to receive input and direction from council on this policy.
Thank you, Mel. Councillor Corbiel?
Sorry, I didn't lower my hand.
Oh, okay, thank you. Councillor Montgomery?
Thank you. And thank you very much, Mr. TD, for, for all of this. I, I certainly agree and support the idea of, of strengthening our reserves so that we have more money in the future to cover some of our underfunded liabilities that are approaching. I, I guess, I would just like you to elaborate on, on your thoughts on what, like, you know, you mentioned about, you know, having reserves for a, a department, for instance. Could you just elaborate on what your thoughts are on the pluses and minuses of doing it that way versus specific reserve funds?
Certainly, one of the pluses would be to provide more flexibility. With having very detailed reserves, it, the reserves sometimes do not correspond to the specific needs of the town. But by having larger buckets of a more general nature, they could be applied on a broader basis.
I see. Okay. Is there any, like, is there any reserves that we have right now that are kind of defunct, let's say, that should be transferred to a different area right now?
There certainly are a few that we can, could consider closing. There's a number of very small reserves, they don't meet the need perhaps of the town, and we, we could combine some of them into a larger reserve or transfer them to financial stabilization, or just close the reserve and put it back into accumulated surplus.
I see. Okay. And I just want to say, like, I, I think some of the ideas you have come up with are really good, you know, having like minimums, and just, you know, like the fact that, you know, we'll be looking to really strengthen these, I think that's great. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Montgomery. Councillor Sobel? Counselor Sobel?
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Mel. So, just on the point of combining specific areas of reserves, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think of a downside to that, and keeping in mind that council will still approve payments out of these, I don't see one. So, I would, I would be very much in support of doing that. I don't know how many there are right now, but there's more than three. It's probably close to 50, I would think, and, or maybe more. So, I would, yeah, I would really think that it's a, it's a really good idea to combine some of these, if that's possible. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Sobel. Any other comments or questions for Mr. TD? Oh, Mr. Legore?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. My recommendation to council be that we adopt the policy today and then ask Mr. TD to bring a report back on which reserves should be consolidated, and would make it easier for council, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Jennifer, we would do the same procedure as we did with Deputy Mayor Cox's leaving?
We can, Your Worship, or we can wait till we're done all items in committee, and then once we're out?
Once we're in the public portion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. TD, for that one. And then we move on to 8.6, Policy Number 1809, Budget?
Thank you, Your Worship. The budget is an important, the budget policy is an important document. It is the financial, the budget itself is the financial work plan for the town. It provides a link between administration, council, and the public. Budgets express council's strategic plan and priorities in financial terms. It gives administration the authorization to translate those priorities into a work plan and to carry out the programs and services of the town. The budget policy gives a framework and a common understanding of the pathway to a successful financial plan when you couple this policy with the long-term financial plan and the reserve policy. The amendment levels provided are workable and are practical within the town financial system. This report was prepared prior to the notice of motion by Counselor Montgomery concerning interest on initiatives considered by council not included in a budget. I would suggest the following wording be inserted into the budget policy. For items not included in a budget being considered as an amendment to a budget, that the analysis includes an opportunity interest cost at the current market interest rate as a cost for the project. We are presenting this to council for their review and input, this policy.
Thank you very much, Mr. TD. Counselor Montgomery?
Thank you. And, yeah, thank you very much for this, Mr. TD. And, yeah, I guess, thank you for the suggestion of that amendment. One question, or I guess one point that I would like to raise is that I noticed that, you know, for instance, there's some leeway given to administration for modifying capital projects up to a certain, a certain threshold, I believe it's $100,000 or $200,000. So, am I understanding it correctly that if administration wanted to change a capital project and the change was under that $200,000, that administration would not need to seek council's reapproval for that change?
Provided the overall capital budget stayed the same. If we can do it within the existing capital budget, that is correct. We would not come back to council. If it was a $200,000 additional spend, or any additional spend over the approved budget, that would require administration to come back to council.
Okay. And like, so when I, when I, you know, I made a motion a little while ago then, that said that, that, you know, whenever there's deviations from the pre-approved capital, you know, list basically, that there would have to be reapproval. And the reason for that actually was not because of an incident where there was an increase in spending, it was actually where there was a decrease, where, you know, council had approved a sign to be put up, like a freestanding LED sign at the arena, and that was, we gave $80,000, or we assigned $80,000 for that. And then at, you know, some point during the, you know, before the construction went ahead, administration changed that to a sign that was attached to the building, and they only spent $40,000. And that, that change ended up having some negative repercussions for, you know, some of the residents in that area. And that's specifically why I wanted to have this, this, this in there, or this, this, this policy. And so, I would like to have the policy to say that, you know, like, the list of, the list of capital projects that we approve in budget time isn't, it's not exactly a huge list, and, and the number that, you know, would be changed, you know, throughout the year, I imagine, probably wouldn't be to a big amount, but I, I would prefer that any, any projects that we do approve, you know, pre-approve essentially at budget time, I would, I would prefer if, if there's going to be any changes, like any material changes, that those do come back regardless of whether, because, you know, even if it's less, you know, because, or maybe especially if it's less, but especially if it's more, obviously, too. But, because I, as I mentioned, there are problems that can come with, with decisions to spend less money rather than more money as well. And that's, that's, that's one of the main reasons why I even suggested this, this policy to begin with, was for that reason.
Thank you, Mr. Legore?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate where Counselor Montgomery's coming from, but there's dangers with that. What is being proposed here by your Director of Corporate Services is normal for municipal governments across the province, actually right across Canada almost. If you put those restraints on, you could be doing, let's say, a roadwork project and you hit a gas line, a water line. You have to shut that project down totally until you come back to council and get approval to carry on, because you don't have any room to move within that budget. And what typically will happen, if you don't have the ability to transfer funds, you will find that administrations will pad your capital budgets to get the extra money in there that they need so that they can run into these, so they got a contingency built in. What's being proposed here is quite normal, where you have money, you have to have money within the budget from another project that's not being used, because you can't go higher than the overall capital budget that's been approved by council, as Mr. TD has explained. So, even if it was a $10,000 change in a project, say, but it was going to exceed your overall capital budget, you did not have anywhere to get that money, that has to come back to council. So, these, these limits that he's suggesting in this policy is really totally contained within the approved capital budget by council. I can answer any questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Legore. Did you want to finish up or respond to that, Counselor Montgomery, and then Counselor Corbiel?
Yeah, and I guess, like, in the cases of, you know, where there's, there's unforeseen, you know, emergent issues, clearly, like, that's, that's a special, that's a special case. You know, I just, I think about, like, as I said, I'm, my, the intent of this is to prevent basically changes being made to projects that are not emergencies and are not, are not necessarily necessary. And, and, so I guess, like, I would, I would have to ask administration then to incorporate some sort of mechanism, you know, to allow for emergent, emergent decisions to be made, but to still have to come back and, and get approval for, for changes. You know, like, if you can get the same job done for less money, then obviously you don't have to come back and say, hey, do you guys mind if we spend less money to do the exact same thing? But, you know, it's, it's, if, if we're being told, hey, yeah, you know, we're gonna, you know, like, for instance, we were told at one point we were gonna get a, you know, like a nice wood dock, you know, at, in Kinsman Lake, you know, where that, that kind of bigger plastic dock is, and we were, we were sold on the idea of a nice, you know, wood dock. And, and then at a certain point, unbeknownst to us, and we were, you know, we allocated $30,000 for that dock. And then, you know, at a certain point, there was this plastic dock stuck in, and, and that change was never run by us. And we, we, you know, we purchased, in our minds, we were purchasing a wooden dock, and, and so if, if, you know, if there's a case where, you know, like, that, that project can't be done, you know, the way that we have been sold on or told it's going to happen, then that should come back to us to see if we still want to do it, because maybe we really want a wooden dock, and maybe we're, you know, we're willing to spend, you know, $60,000 on it, but maybe we don't want a plastic dock at all, and we don't care if it's $10,000 to do it, you know? And maybe, maybe with the case of the, the sign at the arena, we, you know, maybe we would have said, yeah, you know, we're happy to save $40,000, and, and, you know, it's worth the trouble to the residents in the area, or maybe we, we don't want to save the $40,000, and it's not worth the, the trouble to the residents in the area. So, that's, that's where I'm coming from, and that's, that's, I would, I would, and that's, that was the intent of, of my motion, was that any, any material changes have to be reapproved by council. And that's, that's personally what I would like to see, and, and I, I mean, that's, I believe what, what council voted on as well. I do take your points, though, Mr. Legore, and so as I said, I would hope that there could be a mechanism maybe built into it that would allow for administration to have discretion. But, as I said, there, there should be some way that we can also have control over, over the money that's being spent and the decisions that we're making. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments on that? I guess, I guess the only thing I would caution us on is that while we want to make sure that projects don't change in scape, in scope where we're affected, we also have to be careful that we don't do anything to impede operations or to impede projects, and we're not an operational council, so we do have to be careful. We want to be mindful of the money and the way the projects are being done. But sometimes, I, I think, too, sometimes if changes in scope are being made, we have to trust that the staff involved are making those decisions because they have the training, the experience, the knowledge. So, we have to find that balance between getting too far into operations while still being fiscally responsible and aware of how projects might change. Counselor Corbiel?
Thank you, Worship. I also agree, you know, there have been projects that have, that have occurred that, you know, we are advocates, obviously, right? Like, we're the between people, so when we're talking about these projects and they don't, I guess, finish or turn out like, I guess, what we expected, those also have repercussions too, because then people are coming back to us. And I know that's happened to you, Your Worship, and I know it's happened to probably every one of us. And, and the sign is a really good example of where I, I guess, was a little bit disappointed. And, you know, I didn't know the in-betweens, and I know that we aren't going to know everything and every change that is going to be made, and I don't expect to, but I don't know. When a design concept of, of that, I would say magnitude, changes, it, it changes, it would change my vote, essentially, on, on approving or not approving projects. I know that, I guess, every change that occurs within a capital project on a go-forward basis, you know, it, it could impact any counselor at any given time, so I don't know what a balance or a proper balance would be. But I do, I do, I do know the importance of, of this policy coming forward. I would welcome any suggestions by administration.
Thank you, Counselor Corbiel. Counselor Montgomery, do you, do you want to submit a proposal or something that could be added to a policy concerning if there are, if there are changes in, in a, in a capital project? I know you've put forward a motion, but as far as this policy, do you want to suggest something of, to administration?
Well, so I guess, like, first of all, I just wanted to address the comment that Your Worship made, and that is, yeah, we're not an operations council, but we're talking about capital projects here, not operations. I'm not interfering with operations. This is an instance where, you know, we are, we're saying, yeah, here's some money for this specific item or this specific project, and, and here's what we, you know, here's what we expect to see, and that's, that's not interfering with operations, that's just ensuring that we're getting what we're, we think we're purchasing. And I think, like, as far as the suggestion, it would just be what my motion was, that if there's any material changes that are, that need to be made to a pre-approved capital project, that those, those changes be, basically be reapproved by us. As I said, I don't think, I don't think that has to be construed as, as, you know, if, if they're doing, you know, a construction and a pipe breaks or something like that, they need extra money to, to account for that. That's, that's certainly not what this is about. This is just about when we approve, you know, some sort of capital expenditure, and then the scope is, is either increased or reduced ahead of time, that that, that should come back before us. And that, that was just the intent of my, my policy suggestion to begin with.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. We have Mr. Legore and then Counselor Sobel?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Montgomery. I think, Mr. TD, what he is suggesting here with these amounts are the material limits, but you could amend those amounts if you think that that is too high or too low, whichever way you think, and change it, and that would probably accomplish what you're trying to do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is this Counselor Sobel, I guess? Sorry.
Thank you. And, and just, just very quickly, Your Worship, I, I'm not sure if Counselor Montgomery's points belong in this particular policy. I, I have to say, I totally agree with, with the goal he's trying to achieve here. I mean, realistically, if, if, if we're, if council's approving a project, it is, is with information supplied by administration as to what that project's gonna look like, and if it doesn't look like that, there, and there's significant changes made, we should be advised, because our original vote is no longer valid because it was based on other information. So, I, I really think that we have to be notified if there's a significant change in, in, in a, in a project, but I just don't know that it belongs in, in this one, and maybe I could ask Mr. Legore his opinion on that and whether or not there's, I can't think of policy off the top of my head right now where, where council approval of projects belongs, but maybe I can get some help from administration. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, I think this is, this is where it would belong, if you were gonna put it anywhere. Thank you.
I, I don't, I don't, if I could just carry on, I, I don't think it's the money part. I, I think it's mostly the, the approval part, and, and I'm not so sure that it would be a significant thing, it's just a matter of, of returning for, for IA, for, for council approval of projects that have a significant change in, in, as, as, rather than as originally proposed. Thanks. That's all I got.
Thank you, Counselor Sobel. So, is this policy coming back to us? And again, can, can we look at having Counselor Montgomery's motion considered when it comes back to us?
Your Worship, I would bring this policy back in May, later in May, but in the meantime, I'll circulate a, a bullet point that we could insert under amendments to council-approved budget that talks about material change or scope of a project that would have effects on the public. If, if, if there are no effects on the public, I don't think we'd want it to come back to council, but if it has an effect on the public, then perhaps it should be relooked at. And I'll, I'll circulate a wording, bullet point amendment to be inserted to council.
Okay, thank you. Does that help Counselor Montgomery, that your motion will come forward with, with, when this policy returns to us?
Yeah, and just to respond, I guess- Yeah. Um, and just to respond to, I guess, Mr. Legor's comment, uh, the problem with like the, with tying it to money is that you, it could be the, like, you know, you could have, you know, apples that are, you know, the same cost as oranges, but they're totally different, you know, in, in what they are. So it's, to switch from one to the other, even if they're the same price, that's, that would be a problem. Uh, and then to respond to Mr. TD, um, as, as long as, um, you know, like when we, when we say like if it affects the public, it depends on how, right? So like, you know, in the case of that, that wooden dock, you know, the public, and like when they stand on a wooden dock versus, you know, a plastic dock, that's not really affecting them that much. Uh, but it is quite a big difference in what, you know, what we're kind of delivering. Um, so I, I guess it would just, I, I would have to know what, what the, the parameters are of affecting the public essentially. Um, so, um, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor Peterson?
Thank you, your worship. I, I, I really do think that, that, uh, Mr. TD's comments about what he's proposing to bring back do address the issues as, as, as were outlined because fundamentally, this is about allowing our operations to be able to do their job and for us to be able to adequately represent our, the, the public who elected us to do this job. And so it's finding that, that balance within. And so I like that idea of, of consideration of, of representing the public, uh, balanced with not interfering with operations, uh, who, who are there to, to carry out the day-to-day. So I really appreciate that. I look forward to it coming back. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we'll, uh, we'll wait to hear back on this. And, uh, at this point, we've, we have no urgent business, administrative inquiries? Then, okay. So at this point, I'm looking for a motion to come out of, in, out of Committee of the Whole. Counselor Corville makes that motion?
So moved, yep.
And I'll call the question. All in favor? That motion is carried. And now that we're in the public portion, we have that motion that needs to be done regarding, uh, the, yeah, sorry, sorry. 8.5, that's right. Uh, Counselor Montgomery?
Thank you. Uh, I will move that, uh, council approved policy 1807 and ask administration for recommendations on consolidation of reserves.
Thank you very much for that motion. You've all heard the motion. All in favor? And that motion is carried. I believe we have nothing else in the public portion. So we need a motion to go in camera. Counselor Corville? We have a motion to go in camera at 11:33 by Counselor Corville. All in favor? And that motion is carried.